Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on city clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
Present.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We just thank you for the blessings, Father, the sunshine, Lord. We just thank you for the opportunities ahead. We pray, Lord, that you guide us and direct us in all that's said and done here, Father. I pray that we're receptive to your guidance, Father, completely surrendered to you in all things. I pray that our heart is in line with you, Father, and you just direct us in every direction you would have us to go. We give you all the thanks and praise in advance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee work session and city council meeting held on February the 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 24th through March 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is Proclamations and Commendations. Don't believe we have any of those today. Move to item 8 on our agenda, Unfinished Business. Believe we have a motion to reconsider.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Resolution Number R-6923, which amending rental rates for various facilities of Parks and Recreation Department. It's my understanding that the actions that were taken last week didn't exactly follow parliamentary procedure, so I think what we need to do is reconsider this motion as it was originally written, and then any amendments can come in the form of an additional document. So I make a motion to reconsider the resolution as it was originally presented.
A second.
Second, all right. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, is there discussion?
I think they were passing around.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Hadn't seen them.
Mr. President and members of the council, we've asked President Back and myself and this clerk, Ms. Ivan Nelson, we understood that there was a gentleman agreement that took place, I'm not sure when, back in, I think somebody said 1970. Is that correct?
It appears so, yeah.
I was two years old. But, so we've done some digging in the council in the year 2010, which I've presented you this with this Resolution R-16510. It says authorizing sponsorship of Carver reunion. This says basically where the council can and the mayor's office will support and fund, help fund, any Carver reunion. So this was good to find. I was excited to find this. It was our intent to keep the cost of all rental facilities equal and fair, and then when this resolution was presented to us, it allowed us to be able to say, well, we can make donations from our discretionary funds for any event at Carver. So this should put this issue to rest, and I want to go ahead and, last year, we did a research of all the monies that were rented by Carver. The total amount of rentals was $1,500. They're going up $7 per hour on every facility, and just to be, to go ahead and be upfront to help with the council in this endeavor, the mayor's office is committing $1,000 of sponsorship to the CCRC for all upcoming events for the following year.
All right. Thank you for that, Mayor Ford. That's, this was the, kind of the long awaited agreement that we've been searching for. I know, I credit city clerk Ivan Nelson for putting her hands on this. There's a lot of pieces of paper that we have to look through to order to find things like this, but glad we found it so we could set the record straight, and I appreciate the mayor's office offering the $1,000. That does qualify for a city council discretionary fund, so I, of course, would be glad to participate with my discretionary funds. If we all pitched in, I think we can easily cover the costs that'll be incurred per the resolution from 2010, so glad to do that.
Mr. President, after, after, I guess, discussion, I'm going to still ask for amending to, because we're just getting this, so if I can take a moment to at least read this and soak it all in to make sure that it's still aligned with what I have presented for the amending of the resolution.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor. It's been secreted, so this is the discussion, so next we'll, we'll, we'll vote.
Yeah, I understand. Just letting y'all know ahead of time. And just to be clear again, Councilman Avery, from a parliamentary procedure process, so we'll, we'll take our action to approve this as it's written, and then at, in the future, if you want to introduce something that amends this-
Understood.
-then we'll lay that on the table as, and have a first reading, just like any other resolution.
Understood.
That's right.
So you won't have to, you won't have to take any action right now to preserve your ability to do that in the future. You know what I'm saying?
Gotcha.
So right now, we're just, we have a, we have a recommendation or a request to reconsider the resolution as it was originally presented.
Yes, sir.
That's right. There's been a second. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to reconsider the resolution to adopt it as it was originally presented. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm abstaining from this.
One abstention?
Yeah.
Motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. All right. We have four ordinances that were presented last week for the first reading. Item 8A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 106-86A to raise fee for residential garbage collection to $20 per month for each residential unit. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to address this. I received a lot of questions about this on social media, about why the, where, where the number come from, what were the rates, and I'd be happy to let a representative from the Public Works Department get into this any further, but I'll just tell y'all from my experience, four years ago, we had a contract with Advanced Waste. That contract expired, and they brought us a renewal rate. Those renewal rates were exceptionally higher than what our existing rates were. That led us to negotiate with a couple of other entities to try to find a new solution. One of those was working with a local landfill here in Edgewall County instead of waste management or advanced waste, and so what's driving this is the rate in which we're being charged to transport our trash is, is the driving factor behind this, but, Ms. King?
You're correct. You're correct. So between the increase in cost of fuel, the increase in manpower, as you know, no one works for what they used to work for, and then the cost of using the landfill, even though we use our own landfill-
Yeah.
-we have to remember that's still wear and tear on our own property, and we're having to expand our own landfill.
Yeah, and, and the other thing that, just to elaborate on, you know, it's kind of like when people say the U.S. Postal Service lost money last year. Well, the U.S. Postal Service is a service. It's not a business. It's not designed to make money. It costs money to run the postal service. Well, the same thing with garbage. Garbage is not a net positive operation for the city of Gadsden. We lose money providing garbage service, so it's not like we're, the city is making resources off of this. At best, we're trying to cover the cost of providing garbage service to the community, so when the cost for garbage collection goes up, like Ms. King said, with fuel costs and wear and tear on the vehicles, and our contract with other people to, to move our garbage and where we dispose of that garbage, be it our landfill or whatnot, those costs are passed on to the city, to the citizens. So I just wanted it to be clear, this isn't a way to generate additional revenue. It's just to cover the actual cost to provide garbage service to our citizens.
And Councilman Wilson, I would also like to point out that we, as a public service, also pick up all debris, and that, that's a weekly service that is provided that's factored into that garbage bill, so, you know.
And I did a little unofficial polling of surrounding communities outside of Edgewall County, even, you know, Gunnersville, Anniston, places like that. We're the only city, to my knowledge, that provides debris pickup without an additional charge-
Correct.
-to their garbage collection fees.
Correct. I also did a little bit of investigating on the side to that, and I don't want to move to there being a charge for that. I, I don't think that's a good direction to move in, but, you know, we, we have to do something.
Yeah. Well, and I just, again, some people kind of crossed up two different conversations that this council had been having over the last few years. One was about the amount of uncollected garbage fees that we have. This is not an attempt to address that. That is its own issue that we're still working on coming up with a solution for. This was directly associated to the cost to actually collect this garbage. That's all it was.
Correct.
I'd like to add, I think it still remains, we're probably the second lowest monthly charge based on the data that I saw in the paper. I think a towel is less than us. Everybody else charges more than we do.
Significantly more.
This is just us being responsive to the changing of atmosphere of garbage and landfill costs and fuel and, and employee costs, and it's about, what, we've had, it's stagnant for 20 years, the rate's been the same, so.
That is correct, and I do want to say, we are not going up because the other cities around us are going up. We are going up because there is a need to increase the fee to cover the cost of the service that's provided.
Right.
We don't need to go deeper in a hole, and it seems to be that's the perception, is that we're going up just to go up. That is not true. We are going up because there is a need.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thanks for your research. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1516 Fourth Avenue in District 5. Charles E. Coleman has offered to pay $150 for the property. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 803 Crest Avenue to Gadsden Empowerment Initiative. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 8D is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 809 Van Dale Boulevard. This is the former Alabama City Fire Station, and Joey Wells has offered to pay $85,000 for the property. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
A motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 on the public, on our agenda is public hearing for resolution ordering abatement of nuisance in District 1 at 108 Beach Lane, Kiara Lo and Kiana Lo. I've been informed by the Building Department that we are now dealing with a new owner of that property, and no action is required at this time. Right? Okay. Item 10 on the agenda, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 318 Riverside Drive in District 1, Tammy Body being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Greer with the Building Department. This is a trash and debris case. As you see in the pictures, we also have a separate case coming to you on the structure itself, but the resolution today is just concerning the trash and debris. We've taken this case to city court and had no resolution to it, and today we're asking you to pass the resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion and have a resolution to remove the debris.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1204 Hope Street in District 2. William Scott Loring, Lisa Susan Loring, Deborah W. Ferguson, Larry Dwayne Wells, Roger Stephen Wells, and Johnny Ray's Wells in care of Deborah Ferguson and E.C. and Renelda Loring in care of Deborah Ferguson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in October of 2021. There've been no improvements. There was a demolition permit taken out by the owner in August of last year. No work has been done on that. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 12, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance of an accessory building on property located at 908 Penny Street in District 3. John T. Griffin, Matty Griffin, and others in care of Patricia M. Williams being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in October of 2021. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to offer a motion to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 13, our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1307 Jackson Avenue in District 5. Robert W. Bines and Jerry Bines in care of Misty Simmons being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in October of '21. There've been no improvements and no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is a resolution amending Resolution Number R-23-23 regarding one-year moratorium on certain new business licenses within the Couso Riverfront District. This adds new business licenses for storage units, tobacco stores, and vape shops to the moratorium. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out specifically this, we have a more, an existing moratorium on payday loan, car title loans, check cashing, mattress stores, car washes, and automotive oil change and lubrication businesses within the Couso Riverfront District. This adds storage units, tobacco stores, and vape shops to that moratorium.
And I think also to add, previously, this was requested by the group that's doing the, the planning, Orchestra Partners, as they embark on a riverfront development plan. They just kind of wanted to call a timeout, let everything stay as it is while they go through the public comment period and while they present their suggestions for our riverfront development, so that's the purpose for the one-year moratorium. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 17 on the agenda is a resolution appointing members to the Design Review Board. This appoints Kevin Ferguson for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and Denisha Jital for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Item 18 is our final resolution, it authorizing agreement with Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center. This is to shelter animals impounded by animal control, and the amount is $10,691.67 per month. The term is from March 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to our former police chief, John Crane, for his leadership in his new role there, and for all the volunteers and people that work so hard at that organization. I think it's great that we're able to continue to support your efforts.
I agree. Thank you, Chief Crane, and thank you, Mayor Ford. You formed a committee to, one of your first committees, I think, was on this situation, so I know there's a lot of, lot of hands at work and a lot of things going on.
So I want to say a special thanks to Tina King and Jenna Hollingsworth for spearheading this. This was a big endeavor. I can't say how big it was. It was huge, and Chief Crane, thank you. But hopefully this will put a resolution to what we've been battling with and to the Gadsden Police Department and our unit for handling the animals, and this is a big deal for Gadsden, so this is something we're excited about.
Well, it is, and I don't want it to be lost in the, in the process of how we do this, but the taxpayers are spending $10,691.67 each month on animal control. So that's, that's a message to me that that's a, that's a big problem. So I think my message to the general public is please be responsible pet owners. Please, please do your duty and take care of, of your animal. If you can't take care of the animal, just don't get the animal in the first place. Okay? I mean, this, I mean, it's time for that kind of a conversation. We're overrun. The, the job that these folks are tasked with doing is almost insurmountable to try to come up with a solution, and, and we're spending well over $100,000 a year of taxpayer money to help solve this problem. So please think twice about your animals and your pets. It's your responsibility. I think Ms. Hollingsworth has very accurately stated, these aren't just, you know, just lost animals or whatever. Somebody owned these animals at one point in time. Animals don't just happen. I mean, they, they're, there's litters, and then people own those litters, and then all of a sudden, they let them go, or they drop them off somewhere, and then we're left to pick up all those pieces. Please be responsible, and if you know of somebody that's not being responsible, contact the proper authorities. It's, it's time that, that we put a stop to this. We're, we're a better city than this. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Items 19 and 20 are first readings for ordinances. This is authorizing conveyance of properties located in the 3100 block of Sudie Avenue in District 6. Dave Cummins has offered to purchase both properties. These ordinances have been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on them next week. Moving to item 21, new business. Seeing none. Item 22, department reports, committees or boards. All right, item 23, we have five, I'm sorry, here comes Josh. Josh, you snuck up on me. Welcome.
Good news today.
Yay.
Good morning, Mayor, Mr. President, Council. First off, I want to invite you all tonight. We're going to be conducting our Community Emergency Response Team exercise over at Gadsden City High School, starting at about 6:00. We've got about 20 students that have been participating in training for the last six weeks, and that will culminate tonight with a exercise and also with a little celebration and certificate presentation type thing, so if you can make it out, 6:00 tonight, Gadsden City High School, we'll be doing that. Also wanted to update everybody from Friday's storms. We had a lot of damage that was reported countywide. We had six homes with, with minor damage. We had over 100 down tree reports that were all related to straight line winds. There wasn't any evidence that it was a tornado. We had power outages in the Gadsden Metro of 1300 when it was at its highest, and then countywide, it was about 8500. So that's a lot of power outage that was experienced, but as Alabama Power does, they corrected the situation quickly. I would like to schedule a time to meet with the mayor, the mayor's cabinet, and the city council to kind of give you a crash course on emergency management. I know a lot of you are new to local government. We, we, both sides of, of the coin have responsibilities pre-disaster, during a disaster, and then post-disaster, and I think that would benefit both of us to be able to talk through some of those things, and then we would do, as the mayor has suggested before, do a tabletop exercise, so you will really see how things fit together. And then we are in the process of setting up an elected officials course for any elected official in the county who wants to participate. It'll be presented by Texas A&amp;M. Their extension arm is TEACs. They provide a lot of free training through the Department of Homeland Security, and so we'll be able to, to bring that training in at, at no cost, and it will be open, as I said, to any elected officials. So you have any questions that I can answer? If not?
I would, I would enlist the help of Ivan Nelson and Jennifer Smith to help coordinate a, a calendar for, and I appreciate you offering to do that. I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
I think that'd be good, Mayor. That's a, there's a lot of moving parts in your, in your world.
That's certainly one way to put it.
Well, that we should know about as council members, what, how can we help in the event of inclement weather? Should we help? What should we do? Things like that, so we don't get in the way, but we're actually a part of the solution. So thanks for offering.
Well, I, I know specifically, I was able Friday to, to meet with the senior staff to, to kind of walk through what the, the plan would be on that day if something happened, and it just got me to thinking over the weekend, you know, it'd probably be a good idea for everybody to sit at the same table and kind of have an opportunity to ask questions and get answers. I'm sorry.
Thanks. I appreciate that, Josh.
Thank you.
Any other department reports, committees or boards? All right, our first citizen request to speak comes from, I'm going to pronounce it Jay Deese. I hope that's correct. If not, please help me with that. This is for, of the Boxing Hall of Fame. And Jay, welcome, and if you will, for the record, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Jay Dees.
Dees.
8851 Remington Parkway, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Thank you.
We started the Alabama Boxing Hall of Fame in 2017 with the support of the State Athletic Commission, and since then, we've had the ceremony a couple of different places during the state. The last two years have been in Gadsden, and we just wanted to thank you guys and bring you a trophy. Two pieces, two pieces, so you have to kind of carry it from the bottom, but this is a glove. It was at the, held at the venue, Couso Landing, and this glove is signed by this year's class, and it says, "City of Gadsden Host, Alabama Boxing Hall of Fame, Induction Ceremony, Mayor Craig Ford, 2023." So if I can just bring this over?
That's wonderful.
That's good.
I think y'all missed an opportunity.
That's right.
Also, we have a program that I wanted to give you guys from the event. The City of Gadsden has a welcome letter from the mayor on the inside front cover and an advertisement on the back. This, of course, was free. It's just a courtesy, something we do whenever we go into a new city. This is year two. Gadsden's been great to us, had really good events, had people from all over the southeast come to the event, even a couple internationally. And so I just wanted to pass these out. And thank you so much for having us. We look forward to next year.
Jay, I was about to say, I hope that the choice is made for you guys to make this a, a permanent location for these ceremonies. For sure, I know we have a really strong boxing community here in Gadsden, and I believe they had a, a significant role in, in bringing you guys here. So definitely want to support our local boxing community. And the only thing I'll add to that is, if you'd like me to chip in a few bucks to make that placard a little bigger to include the city council member's name on it, next year, I'll be happy to do that.
We can do that. I will tell you, Philip Jones, Philip Jones from this area was a Hall of Famer this year.
Yeah.
And if you go to the third page, you'll see, third and fourth page, you'll see all of the Hall of Famers that have come from Alabama. And then the page after that, you'll see this year's class, which includes Philip. But people don't realize Alabama's, you know, rich history. Evander Holyfield, Joe Lewis, Ernie Shavers, Deontay Wilder, all Alabama guys. So we're, we're thrilled to be able to bring some recognition to the sport and to those guys and to the state. Thank you.
Well, I look forward to seeing your organization grow in this event, grow in Gadsden, for sure. Thank you for picking Gadsden.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to the previous administration, the previous council also for starting this, but thank you to you, and we support you a hundred percent.
We sure do. Thanks, Jay. Next citizen, next citizen request is Fred Zachary. Topic is Carver Campus in Recreation. Mr. Zachary, if you will, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Fred Zachary, and I live in Gadsden. Good afternoon to this august body. I certainly hope that as we recognize pugilists, who were African Americans, who come from Alabama, that we recognize PhDs and doctors and attorneys and all kinds of other people who graduated from Carver High School, which was a segregated school, not by any choice, but by the law of the day. And so I'm here to say this. Whenever my mayor, he represents me as well, sends a group of people to speak to us, they should come with respect. I'm not a boy, and I don't appreciate being called a boy by one of the mayor's people. The chief of staff should know that raising fees does not indicate that all freebies are gone. So, you know, you, you got to, chief, I worked for a mayor for many years, big city mayor. So I know what you need to say when you go out to talk to people. Everybody's not going to be in agreement with you, but everybody agrees that they should be respected. So with that having been said, this is what I want to talk about real briefly with Carver. CRC does not own Carver, does not have any, any means by which to make all the decisions about Carver. It is a, an organization that was created to revitalize the Carver community. Carver is owned by every African American child that went there up until nineteen seventy-one, when the wrecking ball was sent through the building, and when white kids were supposed to come off the mountain and go there two or three days before that happened. We can't get away from our history. Well, what we need to do is claim it and make sure that we clean it up going forth. And, and, and if the intent is to disparage people who speak up, Mr. Beck was there, and we appreciate you coming, President and Council, it is necessary that you come with some answers. Carver, I intend, and many people intend in this community, I polled over a hundred and fifty people, intend for Carver to stay there. And, and a thousand dollars, we're very grateful for a thousand dollars. I'll put up a thousand dollars. So, you know, that's two. One coming from the people, and one coming from me. So when we look at discretionary funds, discretionary funds come from who? The people. That is something that I think we need to come to terms with. And do I have five minutes or three more?
Five.
Five, okay. Fees, I do my research as well. There's a formula that should be used to increase fees. One of the things is the poverty level in the community. Gadsden has a twenty-seven point something percent poverty level. Rainbow City has a fifteen percent poverty level. So when we start to create a matrix or a formula for how we do these things, and I heard Ms. King say that it's not just raising things because other communities are raising them, and somebody said something about, we're not here to make a profit. We're not. But we are here as a city, as a village, as I call us, to be fair. And if we're not being fair to some people, we're not being fair to all people. And to reach back and use the word discriminatory when people are asking to be fair, i- 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 is historically imperfect. So when we start to talk to black people who are citizens in this community, about forty percent of this community is minority, not all black, but minority, that get no real respect. You look at the, the, you look at the, the mayor's hiring, nine-eight percent white with a forty percent minority rate. Carver is, is on the chopping list ever since I can remember, since I've been back in Gadsden. One recreation department head said, well, we can't get the white people to come over there and work off of Tuscaloosa. That's enough of that. We want to grow Carver. We want Carver to be a mecca for people coming into Gadsden. And as you keep suppressing the, the renaissance of, of that community, then you're only going to make us angry. And I know you don't give a flip about us being angry, but it's better to deal with a citizenry that is in congruence and in support of what it is you're doing. So I, 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 I look at Gadsden, Gadsden has, as a, as a, a family of four medium income, thirty-four thousand dollars, thirty-four thousand dollars. That's our mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
But please, please continue your thought, though, and finish that thought.
Okay, thirty-four thousand dollars. Rainbow City has a seventy thousand dollars. So you can't, you can't put us on par or use the country club as a baseline for raising fees. You got to do it right. And Carver should be given more than a thousand bucks. And, and I don't believe for one iota that it was not rent, well, you know, we had the, what do you call that, pandemic, so it might not have been rented. But if you, if you, if you keep it in the malaise and, and the way it looks now, who wants to go there and rent it? And then you want to increase the fees. Do something with Carver that will bring something proud to the city, like Carver did for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary. Our next citizen request comes from Joseph Cole. Mr. Cole's topic is the water board lawsuit and settlement. And Mr. Cole, if you'll please state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Joseph Cole, and I guess you can say slash Gadsden, Atlanta, and other places. To Mr. President, to members of the council, to Ms. Nelson, to Mr. Mayor. Years ago, when I, well, when I came to this council, a big president of the police used to give me calls for concern. But we have a good chief, we have good captains, have a good police force, so they may keep you off of me. So I'm glad to see you here and to help, to help take care of all of us. In two thousand and sixteen, the Water Works and Sewer Board sued about twenty businesses that was polluting the Cusa River. I know none of you was on the council at that time, and Mayor, you was not here, so you're not fully advised everything which transpired. But in two thousand and twenty-two, last year, which most of you were elected, the water board settled with the businesses for, I think, in my opinion, over a hundred and twenty million dollars. Eighty millions of that money went to a company in Hoover, which have no blacks working or doing anything, but that's a conversation for another day. I'm here today because I'm concerned about the citizens in Gadsden. Since, since that time, and also last year, Thirty-three Forty did a story on the Cusa River about, to check it out, to see if the pollutants were still there. They checked some businesses, they also checked some companies. And they found out that the pollutants were still in the river. So what they did, to be certain, they took their test down to Auburn, and they got the specialists at Auburn to check it out and found out that was true. But since that time, and they recommended that you tell your citizens to drink bottled water, don't drink any of the water out of the fountain, and to get filters in your homes. If you can't get it in your home, at least get it in your refrigerators. And I have been crying all along, I haven't heard one member of this council state to your constituents, and you may not have known anything about it, just like the board over there, they passed everything, but, but maybe they don't know. I didn't know until I heard this. Now, WMGG broadcasted and gave our filters, but none of you listen to WMGG, so I can understand you not knowing. But the station that you do listen to, they hadn't said anything about this issue. This is a very important issue, and the citizens need to know the danger in drinking this water. They also need to know, they need to get filters for their refrigerators or either their house. I spoke to Ms. Nelson this morning, because I know each of you council members have discretionary funds, and I was wondering, could you give money towards the fact that it can be done, but you cannot do it because it's against the law for you to give to help citizens or whatever? But if there's some LLC in your district that you can provide money for, to give so they can put these, and they could set up some type of criteria, it could be senior citizens, could be people with low income to help, because this is a very serious matter. People drinking water, we don't know how many people have had cancer, we don't know what's going on now, but they are still drinking water. And Mr. Mayor, you have this minute with the mayor, you, you do a whole lot, and you reach the people. And I want you, in one of your sessions, get together and let the people know about the danger in drinking the water. Tell them to drink bottled water and advise them to get filters for their home and also for their refrigerators as possible. This is very serious, and the only way we can work this is work together. And as a saying, it's very true. Brown, red, black, and white, we all the same in God's sight. So we need to work together to try to see that come forward. See, I didn't come to jump on you. I come to tell you the facts. But if I have to, I don't have a problem in doing that either. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Our next citizen request to speak is Bianca Lindsey. And Ms. Lindsey wants to speak on District Three Carver Community Center. Is, is Ms. Lindsey here? All right, I don't believe Ms. Lindsey is, is here. We'll, we'll reach out to her, Ms. Nelson, and if she's not able to come today, she can come back, we can, we can rearrange for her to have a time to speak. Our last citizen request comes from Katie Bohannon, a familiar face for those up here at City Hall, and she's going to speak with, or about, rather, the Family Success Center programs. And Katie, if you will, if you'll give your full name and your address, please, for the record.
I'm Katie Bohannon. I'm the Resource Development Director for Family Success Center in Gadsden, which is located at eight twenty-one East Broad Street in Gadsden. So I'm brought with me today our executive director, Emma Clapp, who's going to speak to y'all a little bit about what our organization does while I pass out some packets.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Emma Clapp. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Success Center in Edwah County. In case you don't know what that is, it is a family resource center. It's located at eight twenty-one East Broad. We've been there for twenty-plus years. The original founding director popped over here today as well. And in the past three years, we've grown quite a bit. We now have over thirty programs in-house. We've provided over a hundred and sixty thousand units of service in our past fiscal year. We have programs like free mental health counseling, kids counseling, domestic violence services. We are offering a scholarship for the first time this year to students and to non-traditional students. We have a lot of things that are going on. And I just wanted to say thank you, because the city has always been very supportive of the Family Success Center. We're sitting in the Robert Echols Building. And without that kind of support, we wouldn't have been able to do what we do and continue to do what we do. So I just wanted to say thank you and introduce myself, so the new faces would know who I was. If you have any questions, if you want to tour our facility, please come and do so. We've got so many programs we'd love to tell you about, and I'm going to let Katie talk to you about what we have coming up soon. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate everything that Emma expressed this morning and welcome all of Gadsden's new leadership into this new season. I've had the privilege of working with some of you already, but I'm really looking forward to all of us collaborating on the betterment of our community moving forward. And I also wanted to invite all of you to our annual fundraiser coming up on May sixth, that's a Saturday, and it's called Talk Derby Tonight, and it's located at Brunson Farms. The City of Gadsden has supported this initiative for several years in the past, and we're so grateful for that support. This partnership is something that we're looking to continue moving forward, as all of the funds received from the derby ensure we are able to continue providing those essential services to families all throughout Gadsden, Edwah County, and surrounding areas. And in those packets that I can see y'all are, you know, browsing through, you'll find more information about those programs, Emma mentioned, the derby, some contact information with us, and just some additional resources that you can all have at your disposal. But we just want to express our gratitude and our desire to continue that strong partnership that we've had several years in the past. So thank you all for your time today. We really appreciate it.
And I want to, you had mentioned the, the founding director. I can't let that pass without recognizing our friend, Marie Johnson, that's now with the Edwah County Food Bank, but she's the founding director. Marie, wave your hand so we all know who you are. Thank you so much for all that you have done and continue to do for our, our co-community. Excuse me. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, that brings us to Section twenty-four, which is remarks by mayor and council. We're going to start to my left with the councilman, councilman from the District Seven, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Councilman, President Beck. I know today at Heinz Road, we, I think Public Works is up there, and then also the staff from Rockville Falls is doing a cleanup on Heinz Road, which is very much needed. I, I know this administration and Mayor Ford, and we're working real hard on the litter situation, but we've got to get this litter situation under control. It's been a problem for a long time, and, and, you know, I think a lot of citizens and myself and everybody up here, we're just tired of it. You know, the same with, same with the dog situation, same with the litter situation. It's just something like Mr. Beck said earlier, we, we're a better city in this, and we got to get it handled. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Monatra.
And I'll just piggyback off of Councilman Robinson's statement. I think the one opportunity that we have to support is what Tina King talked about, and that's cameras, so that we can gain information. We have one person working really hard to gather information on who is doing the dumping, and that's Jason Hill. And we applaud his efforts, but he is one person. And so I would like to have us all be a partner with Jason. So if you see something, you need to say something. I would appreciate that. I know all of us would in our districts, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
For a second, I thought you, you were saying that Jason Hill was the one doing the dumping, but we'll get him. We know where he lives. All right, I was out last week, so I, I guess I'm a glutton for punishment, so I'm going to hit all the hot button issues today. First of all, starting with Carver, I just want to clarify that the reason I reintroduced this resolution is because the procedure was not followed for how we did that last week. I am all about if there, the comments that we heard today about taking into consideration low to moderate income communities when drafting rental rates, and if that resolution is presented to this council, I would be more than favorable to it. I just think it needs to be done the right way. Parliamentary procedure matters, how we look. How we look to the public and when we conduct our business matters, and that's the reason that I felt it was important to handle it the way we did. I look forward to any sort of future resolution that might address the comments that we had today. And furthermore, I think it's worth saying, I've heard a lot about ARP funds, and to be honest with you, I just feel like I'm kind of getting hit over the head with this a little bit, so I just want to say this. We received $24 million in ARP funds. 11 million of that was earmarked for infrastructure and drainage projects. Over 50% of that money was spent along the Tuscaloosa Avenue corridor, was spent in that community, traditionally low to moderate income community. And another way to say that is of the $24 million, almost $6 million of it was spent on Tuscaloosa Avenue. That's not proportionate. There's seven districts up here, so if you divide 24 million by seven, what it says is at least 22% of all the money we got in ARP funds was spent along the Tuscaloosa Avenue corridor. So to the previous council and this one, I will not even begin to try to apologize or to even wrap my head around the awful travesties that have happened to our black citizens and my neighbors over the history in this community. It's awful, is to say the least, from Bunk Richardson all the way down. And those of you who remember me being on this previous council, I stood up and made many comments to that in my time on this council. But I do believe that the darkest parts of our past, and I agree with the comments that we heard today, I do believe that the darkest parts of our past can also represent the brightest parts of our future, and I'm willing to support that financially or as a council member in any way I can to continue to right those wrongs and to build on that legacy and tell the story of Carver and, as was said, so many of the amazing people that have emerged from that community. And I think it needs to be done, and I'm an advocate, that's all I can say. All right, second hot button issue, the YMCA. I lit a fire on social media with a little post I made last week, and I just want to make it clear, number one, a lot of people don't understand this, the YMCA is not a city agency. It's not a department of the city. The YMCA is a nonprofit organization that operates on its own, and we have hundreds of nonprofit organizations in this city. We have hundreds of nonprofit organizations in this city that come to the city council or to the mayor's office as a body and ask for financial support. Obviously, we're not in a position to use the taxpayers' dollars to support every single one of those organizations. Sometimes we do. Sometimes we're able to support some of them one year and then not the next year, and then we pick them back up the next year. There's a lot of factors that go into that, but one of the biggest factors for me as a city councilman, when I'm asked to vote on funding for a nonprofit agency, is that agency's financial viability. Are they, are we just throwing good money after bad, so to speak? If there's an agency that does not have a clear financial plan for the future, then it doesn't make sense for me having a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers. I'm spending taxpayers' money when I support these agencies. So there's some situations where we don't support an agency, and some people go, well, they're in really terrible shape and they need your help. Well, that's part of the reason why sometimes we can't support them, is because they're in such terrible shape that our money isn't going to fix the problem. And so in the situation with the YMCA, there were some real questions about their long-term viability. Now, I will give all the credit that is due to the YMCA's Board of Directors and the volunteers and the countless number of people that worked hard, and the YMCA does have a path forward right now, I think. Now, despite the fact that we've seen hundreds of YMCA's closing across the country, this is not a Gaston issue. This is an issue that is affecting YMCA's all across the country. And like I said, it has a lot to do with the fact that you can go down the road and get a gym membership now for 10 bucks a month, you know? And that's just money. That's just economics, that's free markets, you know? Somebody can do it cheaper and provide better services, most people are going to go there. I can't fix that. I can't make people get YMCA memberships. But we do see a clear path forward, I think, and there's a lot of members of this council that are working very hard to this second, behind the scenes, to try to save the YMCA, because we do understand the tremendous social impact that it has on our community and our children, and I promise you that that is not lost on us, even though that is not our agency. We are not responsible for the YMCA. Everybody up here, I think, is working really hard behind the scenes to try to help the YMCA pave a path forward that's sustainable to where they can be in this community and continue to have an impact for a long, long time. I just wanted to clarify that, so I didn't have to respond to all the messages. And then finally, the third issue is the water. Again, I will say, we don't always know exactly what's going on with lawsuits and other things with the Water Works and Sewer Board, because again, they are an outside agency. They have their own budget, they have their own Board of Directors, they have their own bylaws. The city council is not over the Water Works and Sewer Board. Now, having said that, it's incredibly important that we know the state of our water in Gaston as public officials. So I want to clarify one thing. The city of Gaston was in line with EPA standards on our water quality continuously, always. We stayed well in line of those standards. It was not until the EPA, due to national recognition and national, changes in national issues, that the EPA changed the limits for some of these chemicals in our water. It was not that our water got worse. Our water never got worse. The levels that we were testing at never went up. What happened was the EPA lowered the standards. So our water was the same. One day, it was considered clean and acceptable by the EPA, and the next day, these standards go into effect, and we consider it to be out of guidelines. So what did we do? The Water Works and Sewer Board filed a lawsuit against the companies that were causing these forever chemicals to enter our water system. They won that lawsuit, it's my understanding. Again, I'm not privy to these. I'm regurgitating what I read in the paper, just like all the rest of you guys. We won that, and the City Water Works Board is using it to install a massive reverse osmosis system, water treatment system in our water plant here in Gaston. So again, I just want to make it clear, it wasn't like new chemicals got discovered in our water all of a sudden. The standards changed, the Water Works and Sewer Board reacted to those standards, they're implementing and installing new technology to address it. In the meantime, I absolutely agree that every citizen needs to know about the quality of our water and needs to have a plan. We've seen it all across the country in a lot of other communities. What happens when terrible spills and accidents happen, like what's going on in East Palestine, Ohio right now, you know, a train wreck, and you got all these chemicals now in your river and your waterways? I think that's absolutely important, that our citizens be prepared. And to that point, I would just call on maybe Josh Tanner and the EMA, if there's some resources or some education maybe that we could do. I know we were able to fund the purchase of some weather radios recently. Maybe if there's a method for us to be able to purchase some water filtration devices for homes that can be distributed, I would certainly support that, and I'm sure most members of this council would probably do that as well. So Josh, if you wouldn't mind with our EMA, if you wouldn't mind looking into that, I'd appreciate it. And finally, I just want to point out, the Birmingham City Council, unlike us, we don't really operate this way here in Gaston, but the Birmingham City Council releases their own legislative agenda every year. They have a legislative agenda that they pursue, and so I just want to add my voice of support for a couple of things that they've advocated for. Number one is some language that will make it easier for cities with a land bank to acquire property from the state of Alabama. A lot of people don't know this, but the city of Gaston, the city of Birmingham are the only two cities in Alabama that actually have a land bank, that actually try to take this state-owned property back from the state and get it back into the hands of citizens. So I support that initiative to try to make it easier for land banks to be able to acquire land from the state of Alabama. And another thing they've done is introduce some statewide legislation that will address this showboating and racing in the streets and this, I forget the technical term they use for it, it's called like entertainment performance or driving or performance driving or something. Anyway, basically, it's a bunch of kids doing donuts in the middle of Broad Street, and so they've, the Birmingham City Council is going to introduce some legislation that will make that much stiffer penalty across the state to address that, and I support that 100%. Mr. Coe, obviously, I can't recognize you, though. I just said I couldn't recognize you, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we kindly refrained from speaking. We, Councilman.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to take a deep breath for you. We're not paying him by the word, by the way, okay? He's on a salary. Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I want to thank the police officers, what is Officer Keener, Chief Lieutenant, Lieutenant Keener, and the group of guys. We've had some shootings in District Three here the past few nights, and those guys have been on it. I don't believe anyone has been injured thus far. There was one case where a pregnant individual had fell from running from the shooting, and so she refrained from going to the hospital, but she was checked. So thank the medics, the fire department that came out. Thank you, guys, for your hard work, even through these unfortunate situations where we're not getting any feedback on who and what and how and all that that's going on. So thank you again to you officers that are doing such a great job in what you're doing. Behind that, I will say, community step up. It has been stated when it concerns trash, and again, a lot of that stuff need to happen within, and then we work out with connecting and partnership with the city to keep those areas clean. Very necessary. To speak to the Carver situation, I was never opposed to the rates when it comes to the overall increase of the rates. It was just, again, eliminating the gentleman's agreement and putting it in black and white so that there can be a clear understanding across the board going down the line. The reason why I abstained from today's resolution, which I believe will include what has been presented today, is because I would like to, of course, thoroughly read it, go over it, and make sure that we uniformly agree to what has happened. This is the first time I've seen it, and I've been in contact with the mayor's, certain parts of the mayor administration have yet to receive the return email or call. And so I just want to make that be known, because addressing the issue that was reported in the paper, I don't have a personal issue with the mayor at all. I'm a passionate person concerning my community, and I am going to be passionate in addressing my community as I will believe all of the city council persons are. And so therefore, at times, it seemed that, you know, I'm, I guess, being an angry guy, but I'm not. Sometimes we want to claim it and name it and claim it, but we also have to be held accountable to those things and deeds that we do. And so as my constituents hold me accountable, they look for me to do well by fairness, and I try to do that as best as I can. So that's that on that. There's no personal problem. I'm not a career politician. I don't look to be up here long. I look to do what I can for my community to make room for the next person to come behind me with some ground to stand on to do all so good, okay? And so it's not that I'm being personal at all, I'm just only trying to do the best for our community. The next thing is, I'd like to thank the Gaston Culture Arts also for hosting a breakfast today to educate us on what they do there. So I'd like to welcome the community to go by and visit the Gaston Culture Arts Center. The arts that they provide for our community is our great programs, and whether it be from art of painting to music to dance and so much more. But this is a program that's cost efficient for our young people, so I encourage the citizens to go by and check that facility out. Great facility, great directors and staff, and great programs. Thank you, Mr. President. That is my time.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to first of all say thank you to Mayor Ford, the city council, the staff, all the department heads here at City Hall. It's a great day in the city of Gaston, y'all, and I want to encourage y'all to continue to do what you're doing now. When you want to know something, come get the facts. At City Hall, you got to get the facts. Now, here say, now, he said, she said, if you want to know the facts, come to City Hall where the facts are, okay? On last week, people thought the world was on fire, but you leaving out here today with a sense of calm. You know why? Because you got facts, not fabrication, not things pieced together. You leaving here today, I always tell our church, an informed church is the best church. So I want to encourage you to do more of what you did today. When you hear things and want to know things, come to City Hall, so you don't have to listen to all the pessimism, all the negative reports. Every city got some issues going on. When we ran for office, we knew we had issues. When I ran for District Two, I knew there were some areas with issues in it. It's kind of, it doesn't make sense for me to complain about Oakley Estates when I already knew there were issues there when I ran for District Two. What we're going to do is continue to work together, encourage each other, and we know we got issues to tackle. But I think for three or four months, y'all, I think we're doing a great job. We could be doing a lot of things better, but I thank Mayor Ford. Let's clap right there, y'all, come on. I know we're not in church, but I got happy right there. I got a little happy. I want to thank our police officers, man, I saw that officer rescue that kid. I got a mother who can't walk, who falls all the time. Some of the guys probably see me and have to go there and pick her up. I'm thankful. So I know we're not perfect, we got a long way to go, but we are working diligently everything that was brought up in here. I promise you, somebody at City Hall is addressing those very same issues. So if you want to know what's going on, come to City Hall and get the facts. And so it won't be a whole lot of this he said, she said. I'm done, y'all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Latham.
Amen. Thank you, Council President Beck, and to the mayor and to those who are here today. Thank you for being here. Thank you for those who came before us today with your, to enlighten us and for the things that you advocate for. I would like to announce tonight, for tonight, that District One will have its meeting at 6 o'clock at the East Gaston Community Center. We do encourage all of District One to come out for that meeting. There will be department heads there and give you an opportunity to put faces with the names and maybe even have some one-on-one time to talk about your concerns. So again, that is tonight at 6 o'clock at the East Gaston Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Monatra. Mayor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Couple of comments, I want to thank the Church of the Highlands and their staff who helped us Saturday for a cleanup day at City Hall. Yesterday, we met with Aldott to learn how we can move the Eastern Connector forward, and ideas to make 411 relocation possible. The staff is going to Montgomery this week, along, I believe, with the council members as legislative session starts today. Next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, the public kickoff of the Grow Gaston Comprehensive Plan will be at the venue. There will be notices on Facebook and a survey link to complete, so please come and please complete the survey. I want to address the couple of speakers today. I did not know that me and the gentleman on the third row had anything in common, but we do. We're both hard of hearing and can't do math. So the word "boy" was not said, I want to tell, the audience was not said by the chief of staff. I've watched that audio three times, and that was not said. The second thing was, four out of seven of the hiring, four out of the seven.
Please kindly refrain from speaking from the audience.
Four out of the seven of the mayor's staff are considered minorities, so I would like for you to be informed of that information also, and we're very sensitive to that matter when I made the hirings. Craig Ford had served as a legislator 18 years, and if that calls me a career politician, I guess so be it, because my father served 26 years, and we're proud of what we've done for Edewah County, thankful to you allowing us to serve. We, me specifically, as a legislator, has always supported Carver Community Center and always will support Carver Community Center, no matter what happens from certain individuals or what fires thrown on, fuel thrown on the fire to try to turn you against me. I want to say this, there is a history between myself and the gentleman on the third row, and if I've done anything to you, I ask for your forgiveness. But I do not know what I've ever done to you, but I do plead for your forgiveness for what I have done. I want to say, I support the African-American community, I always has and I always will, and I want to be. And I want to be fair to the all residents of Gadsden. When I ran for mayor, I represent you in Carver, and in East Gadsden, and in Country Club, and on Noculula Mountain, and I take this job very seriously. I'm 54 years old. I'm trying to do what's best for the city of Gadsden. This is the first mayor's administration that has hired a diversity, equity, and inclusion position on the mayor's staff, and we are proud of that person, and we're proud of the job that Ms. Ruth Moffett's doing. So, I'll end with that, but with that being said, Mr. President, it's kind of ironic. Rod is my friend, and he is an African-American, but Rod and I served together 16 years in the Alabama Legislature, and he's from the Birmingham area, and he's moved to Gadsden and District 3, Councilman Wilson. And he is coming on, and he's our last hire of the administration, and thankfully, we have him on because we need him. And just to let you know, I bet he's smarter than all of us, because he has two Ivy League degrees, and we served on Budget Committee together, and when Rod would speak, I would say that's exactly what I was trying to say. But, so if, could Rod please go to the microphone and introduce himself, Mr. President?
Right. We'd like to give Rod Scott an opportunity to do that, as all the other staff members that the mayor has hired has had that opportunity. Rod, you're welcome here. Thank you so much for being here. We've gotten to kind of know each other really quick, and I can't echo enough what Mayor Ford has said about our friend Rod Scott.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of the council, I personally want to thank the mayor for allowing me to work here in Gadsden. I think it's a tremendous opportunity, because now is the time to look toward the future for growth. You know, life is very interesting. The mayor and I worked for 16 years together, and it was all about doing work for the people of the state of Alabama. And he decided that he wanted to talk to me about coming here to work. There was one condition, though. I have to move here, and I will. I will move here to Gadsden, because I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the people of this city. But, the people have to take responsibility for growing Gadsden. I didn't know it, but I was pleased that the mayor apologized to Mr. Zachary, who, about any offense that he has made. But, that's very scriptural, and that's very spiritual. We have to forgive anybody that we think we have offended in any way. But, it's that person's responsibility, once we've forgiven them, to accept that forgiveness and to move forward, because the last thing you want is to live in a state of unforgiveness. When you do that, your life changes. It's amazing how the spirit works. And you cannot move forward in your life unless you take a stand and decide that you are going to ask those people for forgiveness. You become free then. If the person that you're asking for forgiveness from doesn't accept that, they become stuck. Now, I've experienced it personally in my own life, where there have been times where I didn't forgive someone, or I didn't ask for forgiveness. And you know what's interesting about that? The older you get, the more your memories come to you, and you're able to understand when you've made those kind of mistakes in your life. And they always slow you down. They always slow you down. I'll give you a prime example with me. I decided I wanted to make my 10% donation to the church. Well, life got in my way, and I forgot about that, and guess what? I paid for it. I woke up one morning and said, "I didn't do what I said I would do." And so, I've recommitted myself to making a contribution of my income 10% to the church and to other worthy things in life, because we have to decide that that's a responsibility of ours. It's not money. Once you start seeking money, that's it. Your life is about over, because you cannot live your life seeking money. You have to decide, "What are the goals that I want in my life?" And if you do that, then your life changes. And as, let's just say, as human beings, our families become the most important things in our life, and we have to dedicate ourselves to family. And family can be extended beyond blood relationships. Family could be extended to people that live in a city, a county, a nation, and ultimately, one day, the world. And if we honestly decide that we want to solve a problem, if we will sit down and discuss that problem, the problem can be solved. And it might not be all the time the way you think it should occur. But, I'm here in Gadsden because I see a wonderful opportunity. Life has changed. It is tremendous where we are in life, and Gadsden lost its key employers. But, guess what? Timing is perfect. Steel industry, tire manufacturing, you can produce the same amount with a tenth of the workers. So, that means people have to change what they're interested in, and I think this is a perfect opportunity for Gadsden, for us as a group of people to decide that we're going to focus on the children of Gadsden, to make sure that things will change. But, guess what? The Bible says, "It takes three to four generations to change the people." That's 60 to 80 years. But, if you never start, it never happens. So, I see this as an opportunity to start. And hopefully, you all will get a chance to talk to me sometime, and I'll be happy to share my comments and my life experiences with you. But, I feel blessed, and it's an honor to be here in Gadsden with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
All right, all right. Thank you, Rod. Very nice to hear from you, and I think people will be calling your phone pretty soon, wanting to have some conversation with you. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for choosing Gadsden. Just a few final remarks or announcements. The Alabama Fishing Show and Expo is this weekend at the venue. It's Friday and Saturday from 10:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, and then on Sunday, it's from 10:00 to 5:00. I think we all know how important, I think I see Jen back there. Fishing is really big for the city of Gadsden. We spend thousands, tens of thousands of dollars in sponsorships. This is one of those. And so, I want to encourage everybody, if you want to see some, probably some great boats and all kind of fisher, fishermen and fisherwomen, I think I should say, be sure to go to the, to the, to the venue this, this weekend. I appreciate that announcement being brought to my attention. I echo Councilman Wilson on the YMCA situation. I've been involved for about three years now, trying to, trying to figure out what can we do, and one thing that I'll offer is that, to be sustainable, the Y needs about 1,200 paying members. Today, they have in between, I think, 400 and 450. So, in a nutshell, that's the problem. They've got about a $30,000 a month burn rate, and there's not enough paying members to sustain that monthly expenditure. It's just a fairly simple mathematical situation there. So, that's, that's kind of, kind of where that situation lies. Weather, we had this weekend. I had power out for 24 hours at my house. I knew numerous people experienced that. A big thank you to Tina King and Howell Matthews and all of our Public Works personnel. The way that it works, if your power is out, the power company has to come and kill the power to that specific footprint, and then the city of Gadsden Public Works has to come and remove the tree and all the debris, so the power company lineman can then come and fix the line, take up the old line, put in the new line, put in the new telephone pole. So, there's a combination of work going on there, and then, of course, it all happens at once, but they were working around the clock to help everybody to get their power back restored. And a very big thank you to Public Works and to the Alabama Power Company folks. Last night, I had my first District 4 community meeting. A big thank you to those that showed up. We talked about many items. One was a traffic study that Heath Williamson conducted for the citizens in District 4 on Wild Haven Circle and Country Club Drive. We had, not sure we came up with the solution, but I think we have a solution that we're going to pursue. And so, I wanted to thank Heath for his work there, and he's still got some continued work to, to conduct in regards to that. And just a kind of a refresher, or maybe just for those that are interested, the Gadsden City Council, we operate on Robert's Rules of Order. There's also a component of local kind of home rules that have been inserted over the years. None have been inserted since I've been on the council, so it's kind of been the same rules for, for many years. And so, we, by state law, this is an open meeting, so we have to have our doors open. And so, we choose to have citizens' comment time at the end of the meeting. Excuse me. We've chosen to have five minutes for comments. Most cities choose three minutes. And so, we allow for five minutes, and we welcome comments. We want to hear from our citizens. And so, I had gavelled earlier, and then, and we kindly request no comments from the audience during the council meeting, and it's just for, to make the council meetings run well. If we have a back and forth, that usually doesn't go well and doesn't end well. So, that's the purpose for having those rules. That's what we inherited. We vote on those every four years. The new council will come. The first meeting we had at the venue, we voted for that, and so, as the council president, my role is to facilitate these meetings, and I'm by duty bound to adhere to those, to those rules. So, with that being said, thank you all for being here today, and have a good day.